We have. The. Looks like we're gonna have a contin- uh, what's the first thing on the agenda, Gil?
Uh, money for the state.
Okay, that's gonna be contin- we're gonna continue that December thirteenth meeting. Do we have a motion for that?
I'm making a motion to continue the hearing from Buddy Birkens Day till December thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I'm just pulling up my, um, my agenda set, sorry. Uh, so we got, um, we're gonna cl- uh, thirty-five Cape Road, we're gonna close that public hearing. Somebody can make a motion for that?
I'm making a motion to close the public hearing for thirty-five Cape Road.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Um, got a continuation of a public hearing for five Morrison Drive that's gonna be considered to continue to December thirteenth. There could be a motion for that.
Make the motion to continue the public hearing for five Morrison Drive to December thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great. Um, so what we got here is a, um, informal discussion for twenty-three Cape Road. Just to bring you up to speed, guys, we've already had an informal discussion about this place. Um, at Conservation last Thursday night with these same people. Um, they are, they did it, they came in for an ANRAD, uh, they delineated the wetlands. Um, we have the Shang Wang going out there to follow up with them to make sure that the wetlands are, you know, how they delineated them and the way and, you know, how he's there in behalf of the town of Mendon. Uh, and so that's where we're at with them, and I guess we're gonna just see what they have here to offer for planning board.
Yeah, thanks, Damon. Good talking to you guys, nice to meet you too. I'm Connor Downey from Blue Water Property Group. This is Ed Wilb from Ware Malcolm, uh, civil engineer and architect on the project. Uh, Blue Water, my company, is a regional developer warehouse properties focused between Philadelphia and Boston. Um, and we are currently under contract to acquire around twenty acres of land from Abe over here. Um, it's located at twenty-three Cape Road, so just for everyone's bearings, Cape Road runs north-south right here. Uh, the gas station this corner, um, and the car wash and facility this corner, you can see soccer field and this salt field down here. Um, we are hopefully gonna be a warehouse project, um, on this site as it is highway, the highway business. Um, that we believe allows warehouses as a storage use, um, under use code thirty-one, I think is what I've been told by zoning. Um, so I just wanted to get it in front of you on a basis, get some thoughts out, obviously we're, um, like I said, under contract requirements, doing some due diligence, uh, prior to kick in full design, um, but we are at a point where happy knows the site is environmentally clean. Um, some departments we gotta work on, but did wanna just show you guys what we've designed today and, and just kinda get, um, you know, some initial feedback. So I'll kinda walk, walk through what we've laid out, um, and then I'll kinda pause. We do have a couple of questions, um, for you guys, but just figured, I'll walk through and then pause for any questions or, um, got reaction from you guys? Um, so it is an approximately two hundred and thirty-one thousand square foot warehouse. I think it's seven hundred and two feet long by three hundred and thirty feet deep. It's got about eleven to twelve thousand square feet of office between two pods to allow for potentially a multi-tenanting of the building. We think it's really either, either one or two tenants, um, but very possibly one tenant, so this office pod could be, you know, kind of the main entrance office pod, and then if we do end up splitting it for two tenants, uh, the other tenant, we don't care. So we are building it on a specu- or would be building it on a speculative basis, meaning we don't have a tenant until for, um, the property yet to have an understanding of the market and kind of the tenant demand that's out there, um, and believe that, you know, this type of facility fits that market need. Um, so some other features, just to kinda continue the, the presentation, um, it's got about three hundred car park installs as currently shown. Um, so, uh, one and a half per thousand, um, and then it, uh, it's got thirty-five dock positions for tractor-trailer loading and unloading and two ramp drive indoors, which is really just to help set up the facility, meaning get ramping in, set it up and take it out if need be. Um, not assuming that there'd be any kind of, you know, vamps driving into the building or what have you. Um, and then it's got additionally, I think it's eighty-two trailer stalls that's currently shown. Um, along with, you know, significant landscaping, uh, septic field, obviously there's no sewer in towns, we'd be building it on septic and that appropriate stormwater management detention areas down to the western portion of the site. Um, and also should point out that we would more than likely be proposing, and this is one of the things that we wanna talk to you guys about, um, a water tank to feed the fire sprinkler system. Um, so that's it at a high level, I think. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll pause there, maybe see if you guys have any initial questions and then we can kinda continue the conversation.
You guys worth the investment?
Two hundred and thir- it's a bit over two hundred and thirty-one thousand square feet. As currently shown, it's two thirty-one, six sixty.
Yeah.
And this could shrink, I said, we're, you know, in due diligence, there is some power to be worked with here, so, um, this could get a little bit smaller. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I guess the thing with the, with the fire cistern, I think that would be something that you maybe might want to get in contact with the fire chief in Mendon. He's, um, very responsive to these things. And then what he, what, you know, what he recommends, we're pretty much gonna follow suit?
Yes.
Yeah, we think- Isn't there, isn't there gonna be town water there?
That's so, we're trying to, we've actually been working with Dan Byer from Water Department here, um, trying to figure out exactly that. Obviously, there's a water line right now that runs from Cape Road down to the, um, Talbot Farms back and back. Um, and so one of the items we did wanna talk to is kinda twofold, is the potential to move the line and easement, um, you know, to run through, obviously not through the building, or out through the truck port and back down. Um, it's currently, I think it's best to cement piping that we replace with PVC, so a little bit safer. Um, but there's, there was a amendment to the water contract that allowed for fire sprinkler tie-in, not notable, but we're trying to hash that out. What's that? With, yeah, with the town vote down.
What's the height of the building?
So we do proposing, uh, thirty-two clear height, which when you add in structure and decking about forty feet, so we wouldn't need a height variance. And thirty-two feet is kind of the new Class A gold standard. I mean, some places even up to forty feet at clear height, um, if you're familiar.
I am familiar.
Okay, okay. Uh, so yeah, so that was one of our questions, as well as the, the ability to get a height variance to get to that thirty-two clear.
Alright, sounds good. Um, John, Barry, you got any questions?
When you're talking about the fire, uh, tank.
Yep.
That's in figuring that you're not gonna have town water.
Yeah, and, and we may need one even if we are able to tie in the town water just for the additional capacity. We're working with an MVP engineer, actually, I think we'll call tomorrow with them to, to figure out sizing.
So we're gonna have ramps well above the rocks in the building?
Yep.
You're gonna have, uh, four ramps near with, uh?
Yeah, it would be, there would be associated drainage jet. Yep.
And that one else?
Correct.
So staying on the, um, the fire suppression system, or obviously with the, with the storage tank, you know, we estimate it'd be anywhere from a hundred and fifty to one hundred and five thousand gallons if you, if you do need one. Um, what we run into with prior use of power is the viewing that structure, because it can be, you know, twenty to forty feet tall, um, depending on how we design, it can go wider and go taller, you know? The question that I ultimately had was, does that structure get considered, um, you know, is it an accessory structure? Does it have any more latitude than say a primary structure that has to be set a certain distance away from the property line? Or, you know, if it did, would we have the ability to kind of ask for relief for that accessory structure?
Uh, John, would that be something that would have to go to zoning for sideline setback or anything like that, or you think it could be a waiver for the planning board?
I think it'd be, I think we're talking to town engineer about that.
Yeah.
I've dealt with it before, I mean, I wanna make a-
Can we check with town council?
Yeah, I know what we're doing here on that.
Alright, well, let's see, I guess, let's see what the outcome is of the, of, you know, the final plan is when you come to, uh, I mean, I'm sure that if you can keep the, I mean, our sideline setbacks are not, you know, extremely, you know, they're fifteen feet, you know, I mean, so, and obviously you're gonna have to stay out of the, the wetlands on, you know, in a lot of areas, which you have on that, that lower property is all wet anyway, so you're gonna have to, you know, if you're in the buffer zone, you're gonna have to be a little bit, um, you know, you're not, you can't be, you can't be in the twenty-five foot, no deserve disturb anyway, you know?
I believe David, they are in front of us on right now for our delineation, which as currently shown, we do invite. You know, the setbacks.
What I'm at.
Okay.
Second, you go.
Okay.
What do you want?
Okay. So one, one other item that we wanted to chow you about is, actually, actually twofold, but frontage, lot frontage as Wynton Street right now is a private driveway. Um, and so I guess either A, how that would be viewed, or if there'd be any openness to the town to us dedicating and retaining, maintenance of that road for it to be a public road and have frontage, so it's not a non-conforming lot, or how best to kind of accomplish?
Yeah, look for a county to have a road accepted, and I don't know if it's up to the code or anything.
Yeah, okay.
So you're gonna have to probably do a, you're probably gonna have to do a lot of work on that, on that road and the infrastructure of the road and drainage to get it to where it needs to be for type plan anyway, so I mean.
Yeah, so, that, that's accurate. So I guess we're trying to get, if we're gonna be redeveloping the road to bring it up to standards to be able to support the traffic, um, from trucks, then does it make sense to design up to township code so that if and when the potential to dedicate that to the town and make it a public road, if that would, you know, more easily allow us development to go forward, that's kind of what we wanted to offer, right? Because, you know, otherwise, there's gonna be no frontage access to these through actual easement through the other property forever. And some people look at that as advantage, some people look at that as a disadvantage, depends on, you know, your taste.
Would, would you, once, if this building does move forward, would you, the other property, would you, would Blue Water still own the rest of the property on, on that road? Or is that gonna be owned by Abe?
Abe would still own the rest of the property, so we'd be doing a, I know there was previously a subdivision with, uh, with kind of smaller lots. We'd be looking to just do a subdivision to make this one continuous parcel, and then Abe would retain ownership of his respective pieces.
Unless the remainder of the land behind his property-
This is the balance of the land that's undeveloped, yeah. I think there's an additional two acres that he'll retain that's behind his, um, car service shop.
But you have ownership of the other man.
Everything back there, yep. Back to the property line to the most important question. Yep, exactly.
Alright, well, I mean, I, I, I think that, I mean, me personally, um, I think that that's what the land's intended for. Um, what you do with the road, I guess, is gonna be up to you and, and Abe, you know, I mean, how you're gonna present that to the town. Either way, that road is gonna be, uh, upgraded to handle what you're doing at the bottom of it, so no matter what, uh, you know, there's gonna be stuff done there, so, um, I guess we'll just have to, you know, come to us, you know, once you get your site plan figured out, and, um, and then we'll, we'll keep on moving forward.
It's approved as a developer anyways, it's a, years ago, it may matter.
Well, approved as a developer. I think it was approved as like a smaller subdivision in the past, like back in the seventies, maybe?
Seventy-two, seventy-two.
Did you know of the rest of the land? You need a variance, frontage, one forty?
That's what we're just on.
And that's the reason we get a public road, so we wouldn't need that variance.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right, but if, if this were a private road, yes, we'd need variance for the frontage.
Yeah.
So that's the other one, you can accomplish it as well.
Yeah.
Years ago, John, I think that I, when Abe Rosenfeld owned it, I think, um, that was when they were gonna start trying to do something there, and then just nothing ever came of it, you know, um, over the years, so. But I think that the water line and the drainage system was put in back in the mid to late seventies by Billy Hood.
Yeah, that's who, seventies.
Yeah, so I mean, that, so that's a lot. Things have changed since then.
Presidential subdivision, that wasn't for-
Wasn't registered, wasn't for presidential?
Back in the day?
I don't know if it was.
I don't think so, no, it was, it was considered, it was considered industrial, a commercial.
It doesn't, doesn't, I don't think that's true.
That's, I'll go back and check, that's a good, good thought, if it was approved at one point in time for the variance. Um, and so, go ahead, David, sorry.
No, no, keep going, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, I had a couple more questions for you guys. So, under that use code, or I guess in this zone in general, anything over ten thousand feet requires special permit, right?
Yeah.
Um, the, is that something you guys dread? Are we gonna have to go to zoning for a special permit?
I think we do that.
You didn't need a special permit, okay.
We do that, right?
We, we do the special permit and we do the site plan.
Okay, okay, I know various kind of things, so let's get to, it's done. Um, what else, what else? Oh, in terms of, obviously, like I said, we still have to do the full design to the extent we can submit, but when's the right time, I guess in your guys' opinion, to engage with the town engineer to kinda get feedback on stormwater management design and some other, is it after we submit typically, or?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I probably should, I mean, I don't know, you, Barry, John, tell me what you think, but I think you, we should probably find out if you're gonna, what, what you're gonna be using for a water supply.
Yeah.
Whether that's gonna be a town water, uh, facility, um, if that prop- if any of that property is gonna be allowed to use town water. Um, if not, then if we're gonna be using wells, that's gonna change everything. If you're gonna be using, you know, um, cisterns, I think it, all that stuff is gonna, would probably change your site plan drastically if it did, if it went one way or another, uh, right?
Yes, yeah, and so what, what we typically like to do is touch base with them sooner or later, just so we can kinda hash all those things out, kind of make everyone's lives easier throughout the process, so if you guys are okay with it, we'll, uh, we can reach out to them.
Touch base with Jeff.
I think it's just, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's fine, I mean, was that, John, I didn't hear you, you're saying that you'd like to see a touch base with Jeff Walsh sooner than later?
Uh, yes, yes, sooner than later, yeah, I can, I think I got his contact information maybe from Gil at some point in time, and I can reach out now that we're at the point that we are, and just kinda, um, see if we can get a meeting on the books.
That's fine, and, uh, also, we have a, um, a gentleman, Jack Hunter, that, that works with us. I don't know, I think he might have been at the conservation meeting, was he at the, Jack, were you at the conservation meeting last week?
No.
Oh, okay, uh, he's working with us in planning board, a- as a consigliere, I guess we can call it. Um, but he, he is another gentleman with a wealth of knowledge that he, you know, could tell you what the town is looking to, you know, where our, the town is headed in the future, and where we wanna be with this stuff, and maybe give you a little guidance before you start spending money with the engineer.
Yeah, Jack, nice to meet you. I think we've emailed back and forth a little bit, but.
Okay. Yeah, just email me, I'd love to have a discussion with you.
Okay, perfect, yeah, fine.
Alright, guys, um, any, any, any other questions from anybody online, or, uh, any? I mean, this is just a, this is really not a hearing or a, or a, anything, so we really shouldn't be talking about it other than just informally anyway. But we got Bruce, go ahead, Bruce.
Hi, uh, this is Bruce Howe, I'm at Five Joseph Road. Uh, could you restate the total number of truck bays that you're intending? Uh, I think I heard eighty-two and thirty-five?
Thirty-five truck bays along the northern dock wall here, and then eighty-two trailer parking stalls.
So over a hundred truck bays? Correct?
There's thirty-five truck bays.
Thirty-five truck bays on one side and eighty-two along another?
They're just, these are just parking stalls for the trucks.
Parking stalls, not truck bays?
And not loading bays, correct, yeah.
Okay, alright, um, and-
Basically, storage area for trailers or trucks that are parking there if they're not getting loaded at the dock.
Right, yep, okay, I got it. Um, and how are you intending to have handle the traffic, the additional traffic? How would that be handled through the intersection? The intersection is already a mess, uh, at, uh, one forty and Hartford Avenue. The trucks, trucks can't make a turn, uh, even though the state, uh, came through and tried to improve the intersection. Large trucks can't make turns through there now, so-
To the right, to the right, they can't make.
Think about that.
So we are doing, as part of our due diligence on this site, a full traffic impact assessment. We don't have it completed yet, we'll be sure to share what we do. So we're working with Van Assen Associates, who does a lot of work in eastern Massachusetts, um, and they're gonna be doing the, the forework, so. We'll know more, obviously, once we get a little bit further down the path, but that's, we'll, we'll take that into consideration.
Would you, uh, would you intend to completely revamp that intersection? I mean, even a, even, um, let, let me give you an example and why I'm asking this, why I'm asking the question. So, um, just a couple miles down one forty is Copart, uh, Use Autos or whatever they do down there. A three-car trailer towed by a pickup truck coming north on one forty and looking to turn eastbound on Hartford Avenue cannot make that turn, uh, cannot make a, uh, right-hand turn because the intersection is so tight. So I don't know, I think a lot of tractor-trailers now are, the trailers themselves are fifty-three feet, plus the cab is probably, um, I don't know, fifteen, eighteen feet, something like that. So, and, and we consistently see Amazon trucks, uh, coming, uh, westbound on Hartford Avenue attempting to turn onto northbound one forty, going up into Milford, and they can't make the turns. So I'm just suggesting that, um, uh, whatever thirty-two, uh, trucks, uh, they're not just gonna come in once a day and leave once a day, um, that that's, you know, a real, um, it's, it's a logjam. That intersection is a problem now, it has been for the twenty-four years that I've lived here.
They could always take a right and go down one forty and go through Bellingham at that brand-new intersection.
Yep, that, that's a possibility, that's, that's a possibility as well.
We can't, we can't ask an applicant to start redoing, uh, intersections that the state owns the roads, you know? Um, Jack, you got your, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just that, you know, I'm gonna encourage you, I've worked with Vanessa Associates a ton, that perhaps when I talk with you guys, we either have them involved or eventually I'm involved, and that they take a hard look at what this gentleman's talking about, and also, as a reminder, then the board knows this, that all this, any traffic study that is submitted will be peer-reviewed by our engineers and our traffic specialists, and, and we'll certainly make sure Mr. Howe's, um, concerns are at least addressed, if not addressed, at least discussed.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking, and I think that the board, uh, does have a responsibility. If you permit something, I think you need to understand the consequences of what you're permitting. And if that's, if that's, if that's additional traffic that causes a problem, um, I think the board has a responsibility to, uh, think through, you know, think that issue through.
Correct, yep, I agree with you a hundred percent, there's the, but the problem is there, then, if the problem already is there, um, and I don't think there's gonna be thirty-five trucks coming in there multiple times a day, you're probably gonna have, I don't know exactly what they're going to do, but I don't think it's gonna be a maximum of a freight train of trucks in and out of there like you see at Copart constantly, every day, all day. Um, and that's in Bellingham, and we get no tax, uh, money for that, but we get, we have to deal with it, so.
Well, we don't really know that's the case. It depends on who your tenant would be. I mean, you could,
Correct.
I mean, you know, who are your typical tenants? That's a question to the applicant. What typical types of tenants do you have?
Yeah, sure, so I'll, I'll just walk in, I think it's probably more helpful just to walk you through tenants that have taken down similar buildings in the area recently. Um, so, so Trimark USA, uh, which is a restaurant supply company, just took three hundred and forty-five thousand square feet in Bellingham. Jedwards International, which is an importer of natural oils and natural foods, hundred thousand square feet, um, over in West Bridgewater. Um, Thermo Fisher actually bought a building, other company over in Plainville, um, not too long ago, but then you're looking at your Home Depots, your Lowe's, your Wayfairs, um, you know, it could be any number of, of that type of company. It could also be, um, you know, someone like a Pepsi for their Frito-Lay division, um, or like a Nestle, like a food distribution company. Um, so varies, I mean, and, and the grill in the room is Amazon, they do take down a lot of space, but speaking from personal experience and understanding what's going in the area, they're really looking for their, um, prototype facilities, which is obviously not one of them. Um, you know, for those facilities, you know, they're typically looking for a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet with much more park than this, which this site can't accommodate, so I don't think it's likely that it's Amazon, but there's a possibility that it may need space, um, but this would be up rebuilt.
So, in your, in your existing facility, what are your average truck trips per day? Uh, your average, average facility?
Yeah, all, all of them.
Trucks, trucks aren't designed to sit idle.
So I, I can speak a little more towards that. It's very dependent on the end user. Um, as a base, we, you know, the generic tenant would turn a door around twice, like at, at, you know, that's your average, you know, high-volume tenant. So if there's thirty-two docks here, maybe there's sixty-four trucks being in and out a day, that's, that's our high-end model. Um, that varies again depending on other things that you've actually brought, you know, some of the concern we mentioned about being able to terms around neighborhood intersections. Every tenant that's gonna look at this space is also gonna evaluate, so we as, you know, the designers and engineers, we are doing that analysis as we go, so we can figure out, well, really, what's the value of this property, what makes sense, who's getting here? Because if we look at the street and trucks can't make a right turn, well, that's a problem, because any teacher's gonna look at that eventually and figure that out too. So, you know, we're like he kind of said, now the groups do the, uh, traffic impact assessment, getting counts, evaluating, you know, the infrastructure nearby the highways and making gross assumptions on where these trucks are coming from, where they're going, and what the current levels of service are. And obviously, as we do, you can't pack that little service.
Okay, thank you.
Jack, you still, are you still, uh, give your hand up, or is that up by accident?
No, that, maybe it's accident, I don't know.
Okay, well, I, and actually, we're gonna have a lot more time to talk about this, Bruce, and we're gonna dig into it a little bit deeper a- as we go through the hearing process.
Abe, we got a couple people here that have questions.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, I couldn't see them.
No, go ahead.
I'm Harry Collect, twelve Edward Road. So considering this is adjacent to the Edward Road neighborhood and Talbot Farm neighborhood, um, this is probably for us a nightmare scenario. What are the, a lot of hours of operation of a building like this, considering it's basically stuck right next to it?
We don't know that.
Those are the questions we'll have to ask.
I don't know that, I'm not speaking, I don't know.
Are there restrictions on noise?
There are, maybe in the bylaw, but I don't know, I'm not gonna speak with not knowing.
Yeah, there will be noise restrictions, and there will be, you know, there'll probably be a time restriction on it if it, if it comes to a point that we, when we get to that. But I mean, this was just a little bit of a quick informal conversation that everybody was having. There's gonna be a lot of stuff that we're gonna talk about. Once we get into the hearing process, would you, if you are, are you are a butter within three hundred feet, you will get notified.
I'm sorry?
If you are a butter within three hundred feet of this property, you will get notified. If you are a butter within three hundred feet of this property, you will get notified. When the next hearings are, or you can follow up on the agenda if you, if you don't get, if you're not a director butter within three hundred feet, when the hearing is done, uh, when the hear, then the hearing date is set, you, you, you will, if you're not directly within three hundred feet, then you will have to just keep an eye on the agenda um, for the next, you know, couple months of meetings to, to, um, so you can come here and address your, your, uh, your questions.
I don't think any of us wanna have to listen to tractor trailer starting at four o'clock in the morning to start loading. I don't think anybody here wants that next to the house. And also light pollution, if you're anybody designing buildings like this, make sure that and not just bright, so you.
We always deal with that, that comes.
Yeah. That'll all be stuff done in the hearing.
There's no lights bill over on the lines, and then, obviously, to your question about hours of operation, that'll all be covered in the traffic.
That's all.
I mean, we got soccer field that's got lights on it that are probably gonna be brighter than this place. But, um, it's stuff that we can address, and if you have any questions or concerns, when the hearing is, when we have the hearing, you can bring everything, and we will address the lighting without you even, everything, all the lighting has to stay on the property. You know, there cannot be stuff shining in people's windows, I mean, that's something that we address right away, no matter if you asked us or not, just because of the common courtesy for the, for the neighbors. Whether you're a neighbor in a house, or a neighbor in a restaurant, or whatever it is, um, you know, we try to keep, we try to have respect for everybody around us, whether it's buffers that they have to use, trees, landscaping, you know, there's, there's multiple things that we look at so that it doesn't bother the neighbors, you know, I mean, unfortunately, the land is zoned for this type of thing, so, um, you know, we have, we have to do what we have to do to, in the town, for, for the residents of the town, and we have to do what we have to do for the applicant, who, who wants to buy the property. So we gotta try to do the right thing on both ends, um, or you can, we can, you know, as a board, can get ourselves in trouble.
You know, one more, David.
Go ahead.
Three, uh, I'm having a hard time placing.
Say your name and address, please.
Eric Rogers, Three Bates Street.
Yep.
Okay. Can I recall correctly this, a brickwork where it was installed back in there? Okay, so that, these are behind those.
Yes.
And relative to one warning, correct. Do you guys have, uh, do you know who the abutters are on the, the left side of the, the dark, yeah, there?
No, not yet.
Soccer field, soccer field and solar field.
Do you mean in the neighborhood of that on the other side behind the stream?
I'm just looking a little later down there, on the left side there.
Over here, yeah, no, we do not yet.
Okay.
Actually, the couple of the people that lived in Talbot Farms were at the conservation meeting last Thursday.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, lastly, just wanted to show you guys kind of a, you know, rendering of what these types of buildings look like when they're fucking built, is another facility, we did it down in Jersey, but we expect it to look relatively similar. Uh, so this would be cutting your off from this office entrance, obviously, a little bit of a different building orientation, but we'd expect it to look, you know, something similar to this.
Uh, that's something there we might might talk about a little bit, you know, as we get further into the, the pro, hearing process, but, um, I don't know, guys, I mean, we, we've been trying to do the right thing with, with the aesthetics of, um, the buildings to be a little bit more country-looking versus, um, commercial-looking, uh, at least from a road view, so, um, you know, that's something we probably should talk about, you know?
Yeah, we're happy, obviously, to take, take your guys' suggestions, should also mention that if this is probably at the property line, if you're standing up on Cape Road, you're probably seeing the top, I don't know, sixty of the building.
There is about a fifty to sixty-foot grade difference between the top of that road and the back of the property, so, the expectation is to see very minimal of the top of this building from Cape Road.
But happy to take your suggestions in terms of design, so.
All right, guys, thank you very much, is there any other questions there going on, John?
Oh, nothing else, I don't think.
I'm good.
Are you guys all set on your end?
Yeah.
Jack, you good?
I'm good.
Bruce, I see you still got your hand up, are you, are you all, you've got anything, or is that just your hand up from before? Okay, okay, it looks like we're good. All right, thanks, guys, we'll, uh, touch base with Jack, and you can, uh, tomorrow, and we'll let, let us know when you, when you got your stuff ready to go for a, for a, uh, to start your site plan.
Great, thank you, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, uh, wanna, do you wanna do those meeting minutes, guys?
Take a moment, take something, must, to elaborate on, right?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, I guess that's, that's, we're good, Gail, you got anything else you need to talk about?
Sorry, Damon?
Do you have anything else that we need to address?
Oh, everything's done.
Make it more to a journey.
That's a good point, then, they've got no questions?
Not about that.
Not about that, no.
Not about that, George.
Right, not about that.
Okay.
So, when you're stuck to the thirty-five, we're hearing this closed earlier, does that imply the site plan review is now closed and approved?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
No, most, we are.
It's only closed.
It's, yep, the decision was signed.
Will that be a written decision again, or will that be?
Um, I forgot, Jack.
Um, I can answer that.
Hold on, Gail, Jack, go ahead, talk, please.
Yeah, I, I advise, they, I advise them to close, I'm gonna talk to council since this is in litigation, exactly what she would advise, whether she would like another decision, a duplicate decision. Um, site plan review is not appealable, um, until a building permit's issued, at least site plan and mended, so, I, I don't know quite where this will lie, but, uh, it was time to close the hearing, there's no new evidence possible.
Thank you very much, Jack. Uh, that, does that answer your question?
Sorry, David, what was that?
Does that answer your question?
Uh, no, I'm still confused, to be honest.
All right. Well, as of right now, the hearing's closed, and we'll just, uh, if anything new comes up, well, I mean, if we're gonna have a, uh, anything new comes up, we'll please, we'll be sure to let you know.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there a motion on the table?
What?
Yep.
What's it going to be written, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Jack, are you, are you, are you looking for something to talk about, Jack?
No, I, I, I am just double-checking my comment about the appeal process for site plan review, and I don't see one, so.
Uh, maybe town council can give us, give us the, the best advice that we need.
Yep.
All right, thanks, guys, thanks, Gail.
Good, David.
Yeah.